If I'm not mistaken, this is Wee Blow's Scout 420, is that right, gentlemen? Very good. Well, we are really pleased that you are with us this evening. And these young men are going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So, we will begin whenever you're ready. So, yes, of course, if everyone would rise, if you haven't risen already, put your hand over your heart, or salute the flag. And gentlemen, you take the lead.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. Thanks for taking the time to come and join us.
Good job, gentlemen.
Yes, thank you kindly. Good, good to see you. Thank you very much.
All right.
Okay, so members present this evening are myself, Mayor Marl, councilmembers Gierba, Cybo Koenig, Rhodes, Roth, Tahar, and Dillon. From city staff, we have city manager Campbell, clerk Royal, Treasurer Bennett, police chief Rennick, DPW director Fordice, business ambassador Korfman is here, as well as wastewater treatment plant superintendent Skoll. For the rest of you in the audience this evening, if you'd please sign in in the back. You do have a revised agenda in front of you, which is somewhat different than what was distributed on Thursday night. And again, I apologize for the addition to the agenda. You should have received an email from me on Friday afternoon regarding the Cesquiel Centennial Task Force. We have provided, or the clerk has provided, rather, a memo from my office dated the 17th of April, and the new motion is new business item 15-79. So, it will come at the conclusion of the new business section of our agenda this evening. In addition to that, I believe the clerk distributed a resolution. Do you want to speak to that very briefly?
This is a resolution for the CLG grant for the Rentschler Farm, and this was actually passed back in December, but they have requested a resolution with the same language.
Everyone good on that? And actually, before I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted, it is my obligation as mayor to announce, regrettably, that a former councilwoman, in fact, former mayor pro tem, Wanda Adler, passed away this weekend. Wanda served on city council from, actually filled a vacated seat, beginning on the 5th of July 1977, and served through 1983. She was active in a number of community organizations, in particular, the Celine Area Senior Center. So, I would ask for a moment of silence as we remember former councilmember and mayor pro tem, Wanda Adler. Thank you very much, and please keep her family and friends in your thoughts and prayers. At this time, the chair would seek a motion to approve the agenda as submitted, again, well, actually, it would be as amended, noting the addition of new business item 15-79. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Rhodes, and I'll let Mr. Gierba be the second. Is there any discussion about the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. There are no absences, so we will dispense with that. We have two presentations this evening, from our, two of our city boards and commissions. The first is the Historic District Commission, DPW director Fordice, who serves as the staff liaison. Are you going to take the lead on this? Mr. Gierba, would you like to join him up front? Okay, very good.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for taking the time to listen to a presentation about Celine Area Historic District. Losing my voice tonight. This past year has been quite active. I was very pleased to have a group of individuals that were very dedicated and wanting to really look forward to trying to improve not only our historic district, but to set up some guidelines and aspects that would be used by the individuals in our community and within the districts that they could use to not only understand what the guidelines and rules are, but also to understand where the districts and such areas are in our current city. Basically, we've been holding a lot of work meetings and such, and fortunately, here, we talked about a new ordinance amendment, which we addressed a problem that was happening in our code, where the Historic District Commission is required to review some work, but there was conflict between what was originally proposed 10, 15, 20 years ago, and what was actually happening at this point. So, individuals were confused as to when a permit was to be pulled, whether it needed to be reviewed by HDC, and whether or not it was going to be an issue or concern. And unfortunately, what we ran into and discovered was that a number of aspects where rooms or windows and things were changed, and unfortunately, we lost some historic aspects of some homes. And as a result, we decided to move forward, and as you all did, and adopted, to change the ordinance. And so, we are very appreciative of that, and also glad that we're now be able to inform individuals that really what needs to be done and what can be done in terms of making and preserving our assets here in Celine.
This one is pretty relevant because it's back on the agenda tonight. We did apply for a certified local government grant for Rentschler Farm. We were awarded that grant, and the action item on tonight is to take care of a little technicality. They require a resolution authorizing all this stuff versus simply an action. So, we're bringing back the same language tonight to be passed as a resolution. And those funds will be used to basically create a preservation plan for Rentschler Farm, evaluate all the structures out there, and find their weaknesses, and create a plan for all of those. In addition to that, specifically, the salvage barn is in need of some significant repair. We'll have SHPO-approved structural repair plans and specifications for that, so that we can pursue a grant for that work.
One of our aspects last year that we tried to make sure that we would inform the historic district members, or actually, the individuals that live within the districts, was to create a flyer that we distributed as part of our Historic Preservation Month. Fortunately for us, Lori Swick, who was a member, and unfortunately, is no longer a member of our district, she's moved out of the community, but was a very dedicated individual, who as part of her degree, had come together and developed a web-based program for us to use, so that we could actually see the homes and actually see what the districts are. So, this is really a printed pamphlet that we distributed that represents what's on our current web. And when you fold it open, you can see where the three districts are, and actually, if you take it and go to the website, you're able to go in and look at different homes and get the history on those homes. We're hoping that this will become something more of an interactive at some point, so that maybe when you're walking through the actual district, you'll be able to pull that information up on your smartphone or such. But this was one way of that. We want to continue to try and communicate this, so that everyone that lives within the district understands that they are part of the district, but also to kind of bring that camaraderie together that I think individuals that are within it feel that they want to be part of that district, and want to make sure that everyone is working together to achieve the same kind of goals.
This year, the members, some of the members were able to attend some training sessions that were held by the Ipsilanti Historic District Commission. We traveled over there for a historic window repair workshop, and a weatherization of historic homes workshop, and then also the parliamentary procedure training that was held here at City Hall. Some of our HDC members were able to attend that. I guess I'll take this one, too. We've done, these are some of the reviews that the commission did this year. These are some homes that had various window projects approved. These are some of the other projects, you know, a very significant remodel at 231 South Ann Arbor Street, a couple of roofs, a skylight, and a rebuild of a garage. I think we have some photos of some of these projects. This one was a reconstruction of the front porch. It doesn't really show very well here, but it had concrete steps that were severely deteriorated, and the brick abutments on either side of that were failing also. So, those were reconstructed using a mix of original brick and some necessary replacement, and then wooden steps installed. This is a before photo of 231 South Ann Arbor, a more contemporary structure within a, one of our historic districts, and then here's an after shot. We had a few denials, 319 North Ann Arbor Street, that was really the project that very strongly highlighted the limitations of our ordinance prior to the changes that we made. There had been changes in building technology, changes in the building code, that made things possible without a building permit, that when the ordinance was originally written, were not possible to do without a building permit, and therefore, the intent of the ordinance was being subverted. It was, it's a kind of a strong word, but, so, as Dean mentioned earlier in the presentation, we had those work sessions with staff and council, and created the new ordinance. And then also, there was a replacement of original windows at 214 North Ann Arbor that was denied, that structure there. Another thing we do to try to improve efficiency and get projects moving as fast as possible is there are certain classifications of work that the commission has authorized me to approve within a certain set of parameters. These are the approvals that I did administratively this year. This takes, you know, an approval process from up to a month, to down to a couple of days, so some of these smaller projects can move ahead faster.
This is one of the items, we're at one of our historic district properties. Unfortunately, the depot isn't, but this is one of the items that was approved. It was an Eagle Scout project, that was a new velocity shed, and as you can see, it blends really well in with the environment that's there, and just kind of enhances the whole experience of our depot. In this past year, we also are pleased to have the designation of the Historical Society gathered to work at the monument that was dedicated, Rentschler Farm, as being a national historic and national register of historic places. This was one that Cynthia Christiansen, who was a member of our, and actually, the chair of the last year's Historic District Commission, that passed away, that was dedicated to getting this, and really did all the work and everything for it, to make sure that we were recognized, and we greatly appreciate all the effort that she put into doing this.
More out at Rentschler Farm, within the HDC budget, there are maintenance funds for Rentschler Farm and the railroad depot, so we did a fair amount of work at the farm this year on the silo. The silo is actually made of concrete, and some of those pieces were, some of the mortar was falling out, so it was re-mortared, cracks were caulked, and the whole thing was painted. And the big barn roof was damaged in a storm. We filed an insurance claim on that, insurance paid. We've contracted, the final repair hasn't been made yet, but it should be starting either this week or next week.
And again, for this past year, our commission members were Cynthia Christiansen, as chairperson, and then after she passed away, Lori Swick took over, and unfortunately for us, she also has left the community. But she was the one that was dedicated definitely to getting this information for us to provide for, I guess I would say, the real understanding of what a historic district is, and how to basically communicate that out to the community. Bob Lane served as our vice president, Don Zack, Suzanne DeVries, Scott McClellan, Michael Brown, and Alicia Barnes. Both Scott McClellan, Michael Brown, and Susan DeVries all lived within, and Don Zack, I should say, live within the Historic District Commission, so they own historical homes for which they've been taking care of very well. Alicia Barnes just joined us this last fall, and Don Zack has stepped down, and we will be looking for a replacement for him in this coming year.
Yeah, so we had some commissioners resign and move out of the community. We have replaced one, Ron Koenig, who served on HDC some years ago, and served as our chair for a while, has agreed to come back. I'm personally very excited about that. And we're still looking for one, one more commissioner. So, if anybody has any recommendations, we're looking for another member. And we also, we changed our meeting date. Prior, we had met fourth Tuesdays at 7:30, and now we are meeting first Wednesdays at 7:00. And just a memorial for Cynthia and the hard work she did on the commission.
And as you can see, this is a picture of Cynthia when they were doing a program down at the cemetery, and she was dressed for the Civil War era. She was really dedicated into being part of this, and really lived the experience, and we really greatly miss her. And I'd like to thank Terry Royal for putting this presentation together. She did really well, working with Jeff, and pulling the pictures, and assembling it. So, thanks again for staff support on this. We couldn't do it without you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Are there any questions for DPW director Fordice or councilmember Gierba? No, we appreciate the annual report. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Okay, up next, we have the 2014 annual report from the Celine Environmental Commission, and I believe Bruce Westlake, who serves as the commission chair, is going to take the lead on this. I should note, I think we actually have a forum here tonight, so if you need to meet afterwards, you can take care of any business.
Keep that in mind.
Yeah, we have Mrs. Hess, Leslie Needhammer, and Luke Schmerberg, who serve on the Environmental Commission, as well as council liaison Rhodes. So, we appreciate you all being here this evening. And Bruce, whenever the PowerPoint is up and ready, you may begin, sir.
Looks like we're, looks like we have progress. So, today is the first day of Earth Week, so it's very appropriate that we're doing our presentation this week. I'm Bruce Westlake, as Mayor Marl said, chair of the commission. And last year, our chairperson was Steve Diebel. I was the vice chair. David Rhodes served again as a city council representative, and Bob Skoll also, and Connie DeHahn from the city, and Leslie Needhammer, Mary Hess, were both on the committee, and Joe Freeman and John Price. During the year, Joe Freeman adopted two children, and found it necessary to find a larger home. And so, he moved out of the city and had to resign from the commission. And Steve Diebel notified us early on in the year that he was not only expecting children, or a child, but he was expecting children. So, he felt it necessary to stay at home a little more. So, these are the, these are the three that showed up. And you can see the, they're all kind of right-handers, although Austin is still leaving his options open. But we've got them all fitted out, so we're ready for when they get a little taller. Highlights for last year, we were partnering, we partnered with Public Works and Waste Management to launch the large recycling bins, which I think was, from all accounts, has been a positive thing for the city. We've increased the use of public services announcements to share ideas. We've refined the recycling bins that you'll see in the lobby as you come into City Hall. We continue with the Lenda Light Lighting and Energy Saving Initiative, where we recommend using LED lighting for businesses downtown to help them save money. And we continue with the electronic recycling e-waste, although it's becoming more challenging as the cost of recycling e-waste increases. On our spring e-waste, we collected 26 tons of e-waste and $1,648 in donations to Fifth Corner. This is the largest collection so far, and we gave out seedlings again for Earth Day. Just want to mention that this Saturday coming is our next e-waste that will be in the parking lot here at the City Hall. And I should also mention that because of the change in what's accepted by the e-waste collection companies, we are not accepting televisions that have CRTs in them. So, we're accepting flat-screen TVs, but not the large TVs anymore. And this is a report, by the way, this presentation is available on our website under the media tab, so if you want to look up some of these, some of this data, you're welcome to. This is a little dense for going through piece by piece. We continued with the Red Barrel. This year, the Celine Police Department has notified us that we've increased again, we took in 277 pounds of pills. Every year, that number of pills has increased, and this helps to keep drugs out of the waste stream, and also out of the water system. We continue with battery collection in the recycling containers at City Hall, and this is very popular. Connie DeHahn tells us that she has to empty that twice a week right now. And we use, we recycle cell phones, and collect some money back into our account for the recycling cost of that. The Lenda Light LED bulb system has, I believe, encouraged quite a few businesses downtown to convert to LED lights, and we may have leveled out on that. We've changed quite a few businesses. This year, we've been working with Chase Stanton on Channel 18 Public Service Announcements. All those are available on our website, if you want to go back over some. We've focused on encouraging residents to recycle more. We've noticed, starting about two years ago, we were on a downward trend, and we wanted to see if we could bring that, bring that to halt and turn it around. And in fact, we now have the statistics showing that that has happened. So, you see at the bottom where we've improved the amount of recycling going out of the city, and there's a commensurate amount in reduction of trash. And this sheet here kind of shows it starkly. What I did is I colored the squares where things were on a downward trend, and then in green, these are all on an upward trend. So, on every metric that we track, trace, we've had an improvement starting at the end of 2012, or in the middle of the year of 2013. So, we're on the right track. I think we're heading the right way. So, for public information, we have tried a couple of different ways. In addition to our website, we've tried to make sure that we have something in the FYI that goes out with the water bill every quarter, and those are the four things that we posted last year. In the Celine Post, we have an environmental blog that we try to make sure something's in there on a regular basis. And again, on the public service announcements on Channel 18, we have things that are recurring on Channel 18, and they repeat. This is the front page of our Celine B. Green website, and I encourage everybody to take a look at it. On the left-hand side, you'll see things that are happening that involve the Environmental And also, for responsibilities, last year, we partnered with River Rays and Watershed Council. We have a member sit with them, and the Celine River Greenway Alliance, and the Special Projects Commission. And last year, we had, we consulted with Waste Management on the contract with the So, for our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and goals, they haven't changed too much from last year. We still have problems getting volunteers, and recognition for our Celine B. Green group. And of course, budget cuts can affect our, what we do. As I already mentioned, this Saturday coming up, the spring e-waste collection and seedling distribution will happen. We just attended the volunteer fair. We had two people there, and we, as we have done in the past, we'll have people at the farmer's market and the Celtic Festival to talk to people and help them with any of their questions. And this year, we're going to try, we're working in the Summer Fest children's area, and we're going to put together a children's game and try and engage them. Another thing we are starting this year, but haven't, outside of setting up the possibility of this partnership, we're working on the dog park landscape improvements. Last year, we were advised that some of the groundwater runoff from the park, and possibly other places where dogs are run, is affecting the quality of the water in the Celine River. And so, we're going to try and attempt to change to that. There already, the park's already had a design for that, and essentially, how it works is we add plantings next to the river that are, that slow down the transfer of solids into the river. And we're currently working with Waste Management on central business district recycling containers. That's a problem that shows up off and on. The businesses have a hard time recycling downtown. And as part of Earth Day, we've started an initiative this week where we have several people from both city council and the Environmental Commission, who have volunteered to go at each of the elementary schools and help them change their recycling habits. I think we had a pretty good start today. The reports coming back are, quite a few of the schools were experiencing fewer bags of garbage going in the trash, and several bags recycling instead. And this year, I'm the chairperson, John Price is our vice chair, David Rhodes continues on, Bob Skoll continues on, and Connie DeHahn. Buzzie Needhammer is on the committee again, Mary Hess, and then we have two new members, Dennis Kittel, who is in the plastics business, and he's been a great boon to the committee so that we can learn more about what recycles, and how, and when. And he gives us kind of the inside view of that. And then Luke Schmerberg is also new this year, and he's a great addition also to the committee. Several of those people are here today. So, any questions?
Thank you, Bruce. Any questions for our Environmental Commission chair? Mr. Rhodes?
Yeah, no questions, but I would just like to say that I'm really, really happy to be the council liaison to the Environmental Commission. It's a great group of volunteers. They're active. When something comes up that needs to be done, they jump in and they do it, and it's been great fun to work with them, and I'm looking forward to another successful year.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Are there any additional comments or questions? No? Bruce, thank you very much. Appreciate your leadership. To the other members of the Environmental Commission, excuse me, who are here tonight, we appreciate your time very much, and keep up the good work. here tonight, we appreciate your time very much, and keep up the good work. Okay, moving on in the agenda this evening, we come to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requ- is requested, excuse me, but not required, to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments?
Mary Hess. Also, the Environmental Commission, I appreciate, as far as Mr. Rose for our leadership. I also am on the American Legion Auxiliary, and we are on for poppy days, and I was looking, Gloria Neer has appointed me to come up. I'm on the board. I noticed that the permit did not say sidewalks. It kind of referred to just bushes and echo. And we do do Bennys, and I was wondering if the council would be amenable to adding sidewalks, a public way for us to use for our poppy distribution. Last comment is I noticed we have a National Bike Month, and Mayor said to the effect that bicycles usually provided the first form of independent transportation. Our feet were our first mode of transportation, as young and as old, and hopefully, the sidewalks will also be good as far as bike paths. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. And actually, just to note, on the consent agenda, item C-15-69, the clerk has informed me that the motion, the verbiage is identical to what was presented before council in 2014, so it does not prevent your volunteers from utilizing public sidewalks. But we appreciate your comments and appreciate your involvement in such a worthy and noble endeavor. Are there any additional citizen comments? No, then we'll proceed to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any council member or citizen, any item may, may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion. I actually have one. I apologize that I, I didn't notice this earlier, and maybe, Mr. Girbaugh, you can assist me. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but in the minutes from the last meeting, agenda item 15-68, I believe you voted nay. Is that correct?
If that was for the proposal one?
Yes, okay. So, the minutes need to be removed from the consent agenda. They'll be the first action item under New Business, and I'll, at that time, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as amended. I apologize for that mix-up.
So, move to approve as amended.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Rhodes. Is there a second to approve the consent agenda as amended?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Tahar. So, again, the only change is that that first item, the minutes from the last meeting, April the 6th, have been removed, and they'll be placed under New Business. Been properly moved by Mayor Protem Rhodes, seconded by Councilwoman Tahar, to approve the consent agenda as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. At this time, the chair would seek a motion to approve the minutes and synopsis of the April 6, 2015, regular meeting as amended, noting that Mr. Girbaugh voted nay on New Business item 15-68.
So, move.
Moved by Mr. Girbaugh to approve the minutes of the, what was it? Was that the April 6th meeting? Excuse me. As amended, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Tahar. I'll get you on the next one, Ms. Dillon. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to New Business item 15-72. This is Leather Bucket Alley Lighting Easement Agreement, or Agreements. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the April 15th memo from Business Ambassador Korfman, and to approve or not to approve the lighting easement agreements for the Leather Bucket Alley, and to authorize or not authorize Mayor Marl and Clerk Royal to sign the agreements. Is there a motion?
Move to authorize.
About first to approve.
Approve and authorize.
Approve and authorize, thank you, Mayor Protem Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Cybo Keenig. Business Ambassador Korfman, do you care to make any comment this evening?
Staff is recommending the approval of the three lighting agrees, agreements for the Leather Bucket Alley. The first between the City of Celine and the 107 group. The second would be between the City of Celine and Phoenix 101, and the third agreement would be between the City of Celine and the LSM properties. Each agreement grants an easement over a portion of the buildings located on either side of Leather Bucket Alley to attach and maintain the light fixtures and necessary equipment to provide lighting for the alley. Their agreements also allow each building owner to maintain the right to make repairs to their buildings, so long as they don't damage the light fixtures.
Very good. Thank you, Business Ambassador Korfman. Are there any questions for our Business Ambassador? Mayor Protem Rhodes?
First, I'd like to say I'm really pleased to see this finally come forward to City Council for approval. It's been a long time coming. The question is, is Celine Main Street still paying for the lights and the installation of the lights?
The City of Celine will pay for the lights and the installations, similar to what we did for the arch that went over the alley.
Okay, thank you.
Please, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, sir. You may recall, as, as Mr. Rhodes mentioned, it's a long time coming, but the, the city had allocated monies for those types of improvements, and that was, that's the last remaining. It's TIF dollars to go towards the, the overhead lighting, and we're working on trying to actually get them installed pro bono, if you will, by a local vendor.
Good, thank you.
Any additional questions for our Business Ambassador? Ms. Korfman, thank you very much. Appreciate your time this evening. Any subsequent discussion? No, it's been properly moved by Mayor Protem Rhodes, seconded by Councilwoman Cybo Keenig, to approve and to authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to New Business item 15-73. This is resolution regarding water and sewer rates. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the April 15th, 2015 memo from Deputy Treasurer McDonough, and to approve and adopt or not adopt the resolution regarding water and sewer rates effective June 1, 2015. Is there a motion?
Move to approve and adopt.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Girbaugh. Ms. Bennett, do you care to make any comment this evening?
Questions?
Okay. Are there any questions for our City Treasurer? No questions for our City Treasurer, okay?
Perfect.
Okay. Any subsequent discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving and adopting the, the resolution, is that right? Yeah, the resolution regarding water and sewer rates, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Move on to New Business item 15-74. This is resolution to encourage the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency to proceed with specified site closures. This will be a motion to adopt or not adopt the resolution to encourage the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency to proceed with specified site closures at 290 Monroe Street and the east parking lot. Is there a motion?
I'm Mr. G.
Thank you, Councilmember Roth. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Girbaugh. Of course, I would welcome any discussion. Let me first say that the resolution was prepared by myself and with the assistance of Councilmember Girbaugh, and I appreciate his efforts, and I think Mr. Campbell, or City Manager Campbell, rather, also provided some insights. And I would also note that he messaged on this particular resolution in his weekly communique that you would have received electronically on Friday. I, you know, I would welcome thoughts and comments from Mr. Campbell and Mr. Girbaugh, but my own opinion is that it, it is time that we lead on this issue, and there are two particular components to this, to the overall site that have been cleaned, and I think it's imperative that we call upon our federal elected officials, that would be Congressman Tim Walberg and Senators Gary Peters and Debbie Stabenow, to, to advocate on our behalf to, to essentially get the Environmental Protection Agency, the EPA, to, to close these sites so we can move forward. As I believe Mr. Campbell communicated in his weekly email to you all, Johnson Controls is proceeding with an amended plan to clean up the remaining site, and when the necessary paperwork is submitted with the EPA, it's my intention to come back with a subsequent resolution. But again, I think it's a goal of mine, I think it's a goal of this council, and a goal of the cities, to see these sites remediated and returned to a more natural, appropriate... Well, they need to be cleaned up. I'll just put it to you like that. So, again, I don't know if Mr. Girbaugh has anything he would like to add, but I would welcome thoughts and discussion from the dais.
As I think members of council know, and previous councils know, this has been, one of my big concerns, was trying to address this area and getting it cleaned up, and I think we need to acknowledge that JCI has addressed some of the issues down there, and they were trying to work with our government that, you know, sometimes moves slower than molasses. And so, whatever we can do to encourage and support this cleanup is what I think we need to do. Hopefully, that this will be able to be something that they'll review and understand, that we are looking forward to this being resolved finally and once and for all. It may not be perfect once it's cleaned up, but at least it'll address the approach that we won't be looking at a lot of mess in blocks and concrete and everything else that's down there, and hopefully, we'll get it to a point where it can just at least be reasonable. Only one point of contention, not contention, but a point of clarification. It says 6th day of April. We need to change that to the 20th day of April on the actual resolution.
That change will be made without objection. Sorry for that, Mr. Girbaugh. And, and again, just so that everyone's clear on the protocol and our approach moving forward, once an amended version of this resolution is, is printed, we will get everyone on council to sign it, assuming that it passes. Some sort of cover letter will be prepared, and this will be mailed to the offices of Congressman Tim Walberg, Senator Stabenow, and Senator Peters, and then it's my intention that at some point, probably in, in a week or two's time, that Mr. Campbell follows up and provides additional information to their staffs. Mr. Rose?
In the interim, could we be provided with a map that shows the, the specific locations of these two properties? There's...
That information will be provided and put in your mailboxes. Thank you. Yep. Ms. Tahar?
Yes, thank you. First, I want to say thank you for the effort of moving this forward. I think a push is, is very much needed, and I'd also like to ask that, at a minimum in, in Mr. Campbell's communique, or perhaps also here publicly, we get a report on the response of our elected officials, once they've received this, and, and how they respond to it.
Absolutely. Anything further? No, then we'll proceed to vote, noting the one correction that was made by Councilmember Girbaugh, and that would be that the last statement that begins with "we hereby set our hands and seals to this document on the 20th day of April," not the 6th day. The clerk will make the necessary changes, and then we'll have it available for your, for your signatures as soon as we can. Okay? Excellent. It's been properly moved by Councilmember Roth, seconded by Girbaugh, to adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to New Business item 14-134. This is a series of two motions, Construction and Engineering Service Award Recommendations, Phase Two of Wastewater Treatment Plant. Motion A will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the April 9th, 2015 memo from City Superintendent Engineer Ruble, and to acknowledge receipt of the April 6, 2015 letter from Tetra Tech regarding construction services for Phase Two of the wastewater treatment plant, and to approve or not to approve Tetra Tech's construction administration service, services in the amount of $290,000, subject to a successful, successful sale and delivery of bonds through the State of Michigan's R-SRF, excuse me, program, in an amount sufficient to finance the project and to authorize the city manager to sign acceptance of the proposal as submitted. Move to approve. Thank you, Councilmember Girbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. This is always confusing. We have our City Superintendent Gary Ruble. We have our representative from Tetra Tech, Brian Ruble, here, and of course, we also have our wastewater treatment superintendent, Bob Skoll, here. Gentlemen, do you want to come forward and make comment at this time, and then we'll open it up for questions? And Mr. Brian Ruble, we appreciate you being here. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening.
The, the staff memo describes the activities involved with obtaining the proposal from Tetra Tech for their construction engineering services related to Phase Two. They performed excellent in excellent manner for Phase One, and were instrumental in closing that out, which we did at our last meeting. Also attached, there's a photo page that shows some of the activities accomplished that led up to the bidding of the project. One was the pre-bid meeting with the prospective bidders, and then, of course, the, the bid opening on the bottom two photos to show that we, how the formal bid opening actually is conducted here in the council chambers. The, in the past, Tetra Tech has been very close on their estimates for services, and in many cases, they're left to balance and charge less than the estimated amount. The testimony to their accuracy is the fact that, you know, their estimate of a couple of years of about $3 million came to fruition, and the, and the actual bids were, as you can see on the bid tabulation, are very closely cropped to that $3 million mean, average. And so, that was a pretty skillful estimate. Mr. Skoll can testify, too, as workability with Tetra Tech will still, will, will get one of their better inspectors back. Again, Tim Arndt, who really is very thorough, is, is very exacting on the contractors as far as performance, quality, timeliness, and getting the paperwork provided. Does require some cooperation and timeliness on the contractor's part, too. So, with that, the recommendation then is to award the professional services amount of $290,000 to, to Tetra Tech, so we can commence in the construction phase as soon as we are allowed to with the SRF bonding arrangement.
Thank you, Mr. Ruble. Gentlemen, do you care to make any comment this evening? You certainly don't need to, but I wanted to afford you the opportunity to do so, if that's your wish.
I'd be happy to answer any questions. I just wanted to indicate what a pleasure it was to work on the design phase, and I would welcome the opportunity to see this through construction, so.
Great. Mr. Skoll, do you have any comment this evening?
Yes, just, just one real quick one. We've worked with Tetra Tech on a number of projects, and they've always been very helpful. I have a tendency to hung them over little details, and they're always very patient, and Tim Arndt is a very good project manager, so.
Thank you, Bob. Are there any questions for city staff or our representative from Tetra Tech? No? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Roth. My apologies.
I'm referring to the note from Tetra Tech, says it's got, has exclusion of inspections and contractor, contact during the one-year warranty periods excluded, but just wondering if that's common practice or why it's been excluded.
It, it is the common practice to do that. Certainly, if I have funds remaining, I, I would be happy to come back at any time and, and take a look, so.
If there's a charge for coming back for inspection, what's the typical amount?
Oh, a few hundred dollars.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Any discussion? No, then it's been properly moved by Girbaugh, seconded by Councilwoman Dillon, to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to Motion B, this is award of construction contract. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the April 14th, 2015 letter from Tetra Tech, and to approve an award or not to approve the WWTP Phase Two bid to WIS Construction in the amount of $3,024,900, subject to a successful sale and delivery of bonds through the State of Michigan's SRF program, in an amount sufficient to finance the project and further reviewed by the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality. Is there a motion?
Move to approve an award.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Girbaugh. Mr. Gary Ruble, do you care to make any comment on this? And then, of course, Brian, I assume you have some comments as well. We would welcome those.
Yeah, I, I don't have a cover letter, just, I would turn it over to Brian. I did attach a photo page there, just as a refresher of the major components within Phase Two, so you can see visually the extent of the work scope and what the major achievements will be for the project. Mr. Skoll can elaborate on any details on the appropriability or the deficiencies involved there with, with that equipment. So, and Brian is certainly, can explain the details of the bid.
Thank you, Gary. Just the highlights from the letter of April 14th. We did open bids on April 8th, right here in this room, and we had nine contractors. We were happy with that number, and we were actually real pleased with the grouping of the costs from low to high were, were pretty tight, which gave us confidence that they understood the project pretty well. The low bid as opened was from a contractor from Detroit called Tools Contracting Group in the amount of, I got it, next page, actually. in the amount of, I got it next page, actually, $2,996,301. And just $2,589 behind that was a contractor by the name of Weiss Construction Company, also of Detroit. So we did some research into each contractor. Tools Contracting Group, we have not worked for before. Tetra Tech was a new contractor for us. We were aware certainly of the company. They have bid other projects. I got some favorable reviews from their performance by other project owners, and I did get a few reviews that were concerning regarding the performance, in particular, completing the job on time, doing so, keeping on track of their subcontractors, and asking for change orders, perhaps an unreasonable amount of change orders. The other contractor is Weiss Construction. We are working with Weiss on a project in Ypsilanti, right up the street, and they have been performing very well for us. We've been extremely pleased with their work. I actually called two more references, and I got equally good reviews from those references. So also, the Tools Contracting bid, they did not acknowledge an addendum within the bid, which is a requirement that we make of the bidders. We want to make sure that they got and understood any changes that were made during the bidding period. Weiss did acknowledge all those addendums. Tools did tell me by phone that they understood it, they just forgot to check the box, but I'm just passing that along. So it certainly seems, based on the references that we've gotten, and the very close grouping between the two contractors, I think it would make sense to consider Weiss Construction in this manner. And in addition to that, we did take some alternate bids for some enhancements to the base bid, and one of them in particular looked promising and of good value, and that was to install a grinding unit on the septic receiving system that will be installed. It should help Mr. Skoll and keep that system more reliable. So that was about $26,000, and Mr. Skoll and I both believe that would add value and would be reasonable to consider adding that at this time. So if you were to go with Weiss, it would be $3,024,900. And I think a real good news item at the end of the letter, and it's very appropriate with your environmental commission here tonight, is there are energy-saving elements to this project, and as a result of that, the DEQ does have essentially a grant fund that they can make available to forgive a portion of the loan. So the City of Celine is eligible for a $300,000 principal forgiveness of the loan. So it's essentially like a 10% grant that will come right off of your payments. You actually have to borrow a larger amount, but you immediately get it back, so. That's all I had to say about the contractors. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Very good. I'll open it up for questions from the dais. Mayor Protem Rhodes, please.
There was some discussion at a previous council meeting about the desire to reduce the odors which periodically emanate from the wastewater treatment plant, and I believe at the conclusion of that, you acknowledged that you had not been charged with looking at that particular item as part of this contract. But I looked through the list of things to be done, and I see the odor scrubbers are there to refurbish that, and I'm wondering if you have any degree of confidence that that will help alleviate the odor issue?
It will help. There are some leaks in your odor scrubber that certainly make it less efficient. Some of the air may escape that without being treated, so it will certainly help. Just to elaborate on your question, since the last meeting, I have visited the site at your request with a real expert in odor control on my staff, and we've generated some preliminary ideas that we think can go even farther to help with odor. I have not been able to meet with your staff and review those in detail, so I think we'll have to return at a future meeting. But, so, this project will help a little, and I think there are some other things that will also help a little.
Okay. Well, I look forward to hearing those additional comments later.
Anything further, Mr. Rhodes?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gearbaugh, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, just clarification. In your memo, you stated about us maintaining a potential 5% to 10% contingency. That's on top of the $3 million contract?
It is.
So in essence, that $300,000 forgiveness is the contingency.
That's one way to look at it, yes.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Mr. Roth?
There's some remnants from previous projects. Are they going to be cleared with this?
Again, we, as we talked at last meeting, we looked at those elements as part of this project. The costs were starting to climb up. So in this bid, those elements were not included, but Mr. Skoll was going to budget for those to be done under his operating budget.
Another question is far as the timing of installing the fence. There's some concern that as soon as we can open up the Salt Springs Park, it'd be great, that's kind of the thing. Is that going to be the last part of the project, or about what might be the timing of installing the fence?
We have not specified a timeframe for that within our bid documents. We will certainly ask the contractor early on, and we could, if it doesn't interfere with his operations, we could encourage him to do it earlier rather than later. So knowing that that's important to you, I could certainly bring that to the selected contractor at the first meeting and ask, inquire about that, try to expedite that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions for Mr. Rubel? Mr. Brian Rubel, excuse me. No? Thank you, sir.
You're quite welcome. Thank you.
Any subsequent discussion? No, then it's been properly moved by Mayor Protem Rhodes, seconded by Gearbaugh, to approve and to award. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Excuse me. We move on to new business item 15-75. This is memorandum of understanding with Celine Ventures. This is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the April 15, 2015 memo from City Superintendent Engineer Rubel, and to approve or not to approve the memorandum of understanding between the City of Celine and Celine Ventures to engage Tetra Tech for the remaining utility studies for the proposed Andalina Farms. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Cybo Koenig. Mr. Rubel, do you care to comment on your memo from April the 15?
I'll try to do it from memory. I copied the backup and not the memo, I guess. I did attach the MOU and receive from Attorney Smith. And then I also attached, for your reference, a drawing of the layout of Andalina Farms.
Do you want?
Right. Thank you.
Quite welcome.
We did meet with Andalina Farms. They wanted to proceed with the last two segments of the utility analysis for expanding infrastructure and providing water and sewer service. As you know, we completed, or should I just say, Brian Rubel completed, the wastewater plant capacity analysis. That study was quite comprehensive, a lot of background data provided by Mr. Skoll and also via the treasurer's office, and very good results on that. That Andalina Farms engineer and staff really had no questions or anything concerning the results of that. So their question at this point was wanting to move forward and how to do that, and in what manner or process we would accomplish completion of the two, the other two segments, being the water production supply pressure transmission of water to them, plus the capacity of a sewer discharge. Now, we addressed the capacity at the plant, but there also is line capacity issues. One option is to connect and transport their sanitary waste via the existing Huntington Woods system, which is the closest available sewer that would have capacity, because the west belt's under surcharge condition, and DEQ probably would not allow any additional flows into that. So there is opportunity. We have to deal with the possibility of obtaining easements from a couple of property owners, but that responsibility would lie mainly with Andalina Farms ownership. So the MOU tonight is to consider the execution of the second MOU, and then we would engage the services of Tetra Tech to, at that point, if Celine Ventures signs this and executes it, send it back and deposits the money for the study, then we would hire, engage Tetra Tech to perform the water supply study as well as the sewer transmission study.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Rubel. I know that City Manager Campbell wishes to comment on this as well, and then I'll open it up for questions from the dais.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just very briefly, as Mr. Rubel mentioned, the meeting that we had about a week and a half ago or so with Celine Ventures for this proposed development, appears, and that was, you may recall, that was to discuss the initial sanitary sewer study that Celine Ventures agreed to pay for, that Tetra Tech completed, conducted. So after those discussions, appears that this, we're moving, I believe, in a forward direction, which is good. Once the water study and this, what I would call supplemental sanitary sewer study are completed, the plan is, at that point, to have a work session, a detailed work session with city council and the developer to talk in greater detail, so.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Any questions for city staff? Mr. Gearbaugh?
Just curious, does the Huntington Woods transmission line, does that have a lift station in there at some point?
Correct. That's, part of the analysis would involve the capacity and any alteration that may be needed to upgrade the pump station.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Mr. Rhodes?
On the memorandum of understanding, item number four, talks about the possibility of another developer or property owner benefiting from the city recovering some of those costs and then reimbursing to Celine Ventures. And the end of that paragraph says, "Some of the costs would not the amount reimbursed, to be reimbursed to Celine Ventures be the amount recovered from the third party, less the 10% city fee?" Some of the cost seems nebulous.
I really don't know the history of that article myself. It was drafted by the attorney. He must have had a reason for adding that.
Mr. Campbell can comment on that.
That was, again, it says the possibility that if another developer came along and because Celine Ventures is having to front the cost for this study, that the city would advocate that a third-party developer would reimburse some of that money toward, to Celine Ventures, since they've had to front the cost for that.
Yeah, and I understand that my comment had to do with the last four words that says "some of the costs," and that seems to me that it isn't very definite. So it seems like what we would reimburse to Celine Ventures is whatever the appropriate share is that is recovered, less the 10% city fee. Just the way I read it, but...
Sure, well, it is, like you said, it is a bit...
That's the intent.
Right, it is a bit nebulous, but again, I think it's, without knowing what percentage that might be, it's there, so we know that we would work towards that, but to put a certain percentage, I don't know that we could, because we don't know what that percentage would be to reimburse, is what I'm trying to say. I guess the intent was to put it in there to say, we will, if there is, if there is reason to do this, if there is another developer that comes on and is able to benefit from this, that they would really, that they should pay something.
Okay. Celine Ventures is okay with it, I am.
Additional questions? Mr. Rubel, thank you. Any subsequent discussion? Well, I would just echo City Manager Campbell's comments that this is a very promising development. Obviously, there's a lot of moving pieces as it relates to this particular initiative and analysis, but it appears as though things are moving in the right direction, and I look forward to having this study completed and working with staff and the developer and any other interested parties to schedule a work session, hopefully sometime in June or July, for council to discuss this whole venture and project in a very comprehensive way, to determine the best ways to move forward. So I'm enthusiastic about this motion, and very pleased with the work that staff and ultimately Tetra Tech will be doing. So if there's nothing further, we'll proceed to vote then. It's been properly moved by Mayor Protem Rhodes, seconded by Councilwoman Cybo Koenig, to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 15-76. This is a resolution for CLG Grant for Rentschler Farm Condition Assessment Report and Salvage Barn Structural Repair Plans and Specifications. It's a mouthful. This will be a motion to approve and adopt or not adopt the resolution requiring the State Historic Preservation Office, Michigan State Housing Development Authority, for a grant agreement for Rentschler Farm Conditional Assessment Report and Salvage Barn Structural Repair Plan and Specifications.
Move to approve and adopt.
Thank you. Councilmember Gearbaugh, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Cybo Koenig. Director Fuentes, I'll turn it over to you. That was, it was a mouthful, but it is what it is. So we welcome any comments that you have on this issue.
As I mentioned during the HCC report, this is the same language that was passed back in November prior to application for this grant, but we are now, we've been awarded the grant and working on the grant agreement, crossing some Ts and dotting some Is. The shippo wants it as a resolution rather than a motion, so that's simply what we're doing here tonight, passing what we've already passed as a resolution.
Very good. Are there any comments for our DPW director?
Just a quick question.
Please.
Was this the full amount that we requested?
Yes.
Just couldn't recall.
Any additional questions? Jeff, thank you. Any subsequent discussion? No, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Cybo Koenig, to approve and to adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 15-77. This is public hearing for Celine Fire Special Assessment. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo dated April 16 from Clerk Royal, and to approve or not to approve changing the fire special assessment hearing date to May 19, 2015.
18th.
What did I say? I apologize. 19, I apologize. May 18, 2015.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Councilmember Gearbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. Do you care to make any comment, Clerk Royal?
It was just a typo.
Okay, very good. There's no discussion, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Dillon, to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to our last new business item of the evening, which is 15-79. This is Sesquiel Centennial Task Force. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the April 17, 2015 memo from Mayor Morrow, and to confirm Mayor Morrow's appointments to the Celine Sesquiel Centennial Task Force as outlined in his memorandum. Is there a motion?
Move to acknowledge receipt and to confirm.
Thank you. Mr. Tahar, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Cybo Koenig. Well, as I stated in an email to you all on Friday, I apologize for not being able to include this in your packet that went out Thursday night. I was still waiting for a few individuals to confirm their participation in this task force. Needless to say, the memorandum speaks for itself, but I do want to emphasize a point that I made in either the second or third paragraph, which is that I couldn't be more pleased with the type of people who volunteered to serve in this capacity. I think there are some really outstanding individuals who will be serving on this task force, who represent a diverse array of organizations and constituencies in this community. I'm very much looking forward to seeing what they plan and to celebrating this community's 150th anniversary in 2016. I should also note, similar to our Substance Abuse Task Force, that the establishment of this group in no way prohibits the members from establishing work groups or subcommittees. Of course, the membership of subcommittees would need to be reviewed and approved by city council, but I'm very much aware of the fact that as this group begins their work, I'm sure there are a number of other individuals that they will, they will seek guidance and support from. So this really will be a community effort, but these are the, these are the eight official representatives, and then nine, if you include myself as an ex-officio. But again, very pleased with how this came together, and I would welcome any questions or comments that you may have. Mr. Gearbaugh?
Just a comment that I...
Just a comment that I believe that, as council, we should be giving us a nominal budget so that celebration, whatever, but I know that'll be coming forward.
Absolutely. And I think I, I mentioned something to that effect in the final paragraph, and Mayor Protem Rhodes and I spoke about this maybe a week or so ago, about designating a specific line item related to this. I think that would be, I think that would be helpful. Any additional comments? Any subsequent discussion?
No, then it's been properly moved by Tahar, seconded by Sybokanek, to acknowledge receipt and to confirm the appointments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. As have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to the discussion portion of our agenda, commission, committee, or task force reports from members of council.
Mayor Protem Rhodes?
Just a quick additional comment from the Environmental Commission, because there was a pretty thorough report given earlier this evening, but I did want to let folks know that while we cannot accept the old-style televisions and monitors at this particular event, there will be a county cleanup held at DPW on September the 19th, and they can accept those large televisions and monitors at no extra charge, so we can deal with that. The other thing I wanted to mention on Parks Commission, the, like most of us now, spring is here, things are starting to grow, people are getting back outside, Parks Commission is getting pretty active in reviewing the status of the various parks and determining what needs to be done to get them shipshape. And to recognize Earth Day, there will be a tree planted at the community gardens this Friday at 1:15 in the afternoon. And any of you who are available to attend that, that ceremony, the youngsters from the middle school come out, and it's always fun to have them there. So that's this Friday, 1:15, at the community garden site. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rhodes. Additional committee, commission, or task force reports? The only one that I would note is I would encourage any member of council or any member of the public to attend our Substance Abuse Task Force, which meets this Thursday at 7:00 PM, is that correct, Chief?
Six.
6:00 PM, excuse me. Well, I'm glad I brought it up. 6:00 PM, we'll be meeting here in council chambers, and I think we hope to finalize our strategic plan, our strategic framework for moving forward. I corrected saying that, Chief? And we welcome any and all public participation. So again, that's this Thursday at 6:00 PM here in council chambers. If there are no additional commission, committee, or task force reports, how about our reports and other announcements? Mr. Gearbaugh.
Just a, kind of a notice to individuals. The Celine Area Historical Society has had a number of individuals on the boards that have always helped during cleanup and at the farm and even at the depot, and this year we've had a number of individuals that have had due to either health or partner or spouse cares and needs, probably won't be able to help us as much this year. So if you're really thinking about supporting the Celine Area History and everything, we would appreciate anyone that would help out the committee or actually even be, maybe considering becoming more involved with the, the group. There's a lot of things to go on, and as everyone knows, even with a farm, there's a lot of work to happen, and so we'd appreciate anyone. Our cleanup, I believe, is this weekend, too? And everything is happening this weekend. So if anybody has some time, we would greatly appreciate it.
Very good. And maybe, Mr. Gearbaugh, you could, you can confirm those details because we could certainly put it on the city's Facebook page.
And we will, yeah.
We'll disseminate that the best we can. Thank you for that. Additional reports and announcements? Mr. Rhodes, I'm sorry.
That's okay. First thing I wanted to do, and I should have done it before, is I wanted to thank all those individuals who volunteered to serve on the Sesquicentennial Task Force. That's going to be a major effort that those people need to, to take on, and I very much appreciate that they're willing to do that. The other next announcement is I want to let everyone know that this class number 16 of the Celine Leadership Institute graduated this past week, so there's another 23, 24 individuals, I believe, who have gone through that program. So we're well over 300, approaching 400 folks now who have gone through, and Mayor Morrow was kind enough to take time off from his other duties to come down and hand out the certificates and congratulate all those individuals. The last thing that I wanted to say was I'd like to see us step up our traffic enforcement for downtown. It, it seems to me that we're getting more and more folks who are running red lights and doing it with impunity, and I think we're getting this violation creep. So when a driver sees other drivers getting away with it, I think then they're more likely to do it also. So I would respectfully request that we, we make a concerted effort here to let people know that we do have laws, rules, and regulations in the city and that they need to abide by them, particularly when driving those big vehicles before somebody gets hurt. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Appreciate that. And let me, let me echo your comments about the Celine Leadership Institute. It's a wonderful program. I was honored to be here on Thursday afternoon and after, I believe, a one-year hiatus, is that correct?
Correct.
What an impressive group of, of community leaders. I, I expect some, some great things. It was a very, very impressive class, and, you know, I was just thrilled to participate. So thank you for including me. If there's nothing further, then we'll proceed to public comments. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question to City Council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
Mary Hess. And I wanted to talk about our $3 million on the plant and water department. Years ago, I was on council when we did two additions to our disposal plant. The odor problem is very serious. We have, I think, an ordinance that if I had fecal material in my yard and it's offensive to my neighbor, it's against the law. But somehow, we have, and I appreciate Mr. Rhodes asking about the odor problem of some of our neighbors and residents and taxpayers, what's going on. Well, we think we can fix this, and it appears maybe we can do that. That is not an assurance, especially when we're talking about possibly building 263 homes in a 425 outside of the city limits, which of course, the solution to pollution's dilution. I think before we start adding to the plant, we need to assure those taxpayers and residents that we have taken care of the odor problem. It's offensive, and there is no excuse. As long as we're putting in all this money into the plant, it definitely is one of the priorities, I would believe, of the city and its leadership to ensure those residents of a peaceful existence and able to utilize it outside. Thank you.
The additional city, citizen comments?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Alicia Ping. I am your county commissioner, and I just wanted to share with you a couple of updates. The first one, in case you don't know, Vernon McDaniel, our county administrator, is retiring after 33 years. So county administrator is a, a role that is same as Todd, so, city manager. So she's had that role for 33 years. We are going to be deciding at our next meeting how we will be replacing her. There will be discussions around having an elected county administrator, which would at that point become a county executive, or if we go out for a search for another county administrator to fill the same role structure that's currently there. So that will be forthcoming. Also wanted to let you know that there is a task force that's been established. There are two more meetings that are going to be held, and it's around the Ann Arbor Area Convention and Visitors Bureau, along with Ypsilanti Visitor, or Convention and Visitors Bureau, and how those two organizations are structured and whether it would be better to have one organization for, for the county or if the two are good the way that they are. They are funded by the Accommodations Ordinance, which is a tax that's collected through hoteliers, about $4 million to the county, $3 million goes to Ann Arbor, $1 million goes to Ypsilanti. Currently, they perform, I think, pretty different functions, both supporting the county as a whole, but in a different way. And in case you're not aware, the Chamber of Commerce has received two, the CTAP grants. So the first one was last year, $10,000, and then another $10,000 this year to help with those, the efforts in promoting visitors and tourism in, in the area. So, so that's, that's going on. And so if you do support the current structure or you'd like to see some other sort of structure, a letter to the Board of Commissioners would be helpful, either individually or collectively. And then last but not least, Act 88 dollars, I know I came here for you last year. Again, we have money available. We've allocated about a third of the mini-grants, so 30,000 of the $97,000 that's available. So we have approximately $69,000 left, and those are $10,000 or less grants. And the big, the big grants we'll be discussing at the next Act 88 meeting, and those will come before the Board of Commissioners at the first meeting in May also. So another $450,000-ish dollars in, in grants. Act 88 dollars are collected through residential taxes throughout the county that are levied. Any comments, questions? Oh, I do, before I forget, I want to introduce Commissioner Dan Smith. So he is a county commissioner for District 2. Got it in.
We would welcome any questions for our county commissioner.
Can you just clarify, Act 88, what can you use those funds for and what kind of grants are, it's available for?
So tourism, agriculture, and economic development, promoting those activities. So there's been, and it continues to change because the act is really, really old, like really, really old. And so who we can give that money to before, when I came to you before, we were allowed to give that money to, it was, was considered nonprofit. So in, in that definition was local units of government and, and those sorts of things. That has now been clarified by our corporate counsel, that it cannot be a local unit of government. It does have to, in fact, be a nonprofit 501(c)(3). So...
It's like our main street program?
Correct.
Thank you.
That would qualify.
Cool. Thanks.
Mr. Rhodes, please.
I did want to recognize and thank Commissioner Ping for her assistance in helping the Friends of Hennifield receive a $30,000 grant from the county parks to go towards the lighting and electrification of the pathway around Hennifield. Thank you very much.
Hey, you're welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions for our county commissioner? No? Alicia, appreciate, oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Tahar.
Thank you. So agriculture is one of the areas, so would the Celine Fair be an organization, an organization that might qualify for a grant under that umbrella?
Yes, and we just awarded them a grant a month ago, so they received $5,000 from Act 88 funds.
Okay. Good.
Yeah.
Anything further? No? Alicia, appreciate your time and your leadership. Thank you so much for being here this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Have a good night.
Any other citizen comments?
Hi, I'm Elaine Lowerman. I'm representing the Celine Relay for Life. We have come up with the idea, and sorry for the late ask, paint the town purple for our event on May 2nd. Businesses will be hanging a purple bow, and we would also like to hang this purple bow on the light posts and the trees that line the downtown if we get your approval. And we'd like to do it at least like the day before, so May 1st. It'd be great if we could do it a week before, but I know I'm, it's a late ask, so I won't add, you know, it's a lot to ask for the approval for that, so day before would be great.
And I believe you, you contacted the clerk's office, I apologize for interrupting you, but I believe you, you or a colleague of yours with Relay for Life contacted the clerk's office about doing this. Unfortunately, I think they contacted your office on Friday after the packets had gone out. But I would very much welcome a, a discussion as it relates to the request. Obviously, having Relay for Life in our community and really the heart of our community in Hennifield is, is great, it's a very noble cause, and we appreciate all of your efforts. Does anyone have any objections to allowing them to say, tell us again specifically what the request is?
So, so their, their purple bows are about the size of a dinner plate, and so businesses will put them on their door or in the window, and what we'd like to do is line the main street, you know, hang them on the, tie them on the street lamps and the trees.
Okay.
And there, there will be the sandwich boards that we've already, you know, received approval for, so...
Okay. Very good.
I don't have any problem with the light poles. I'm not crazy about the trees, so...
Okay. Okay.
Personal opinion.
How does the rest of council feel?
No objections.
No objections. Mr. Roth?
No objections.
Okay.
I support the request.
I do, too.
Support the request. Okay. Okay. Do, the chair would welcome a, a, a motion if someone would like to make it.
I so move.
To allow, allow Relay for Life to place ribbons on the...
Purple bows? On May 1st?
May 1st, yes.
Just on May 1st?
May 1st, May 2nd. The event is May 2nd. So we'll...
Do you want to do the week before?
Well, if you, if, hey, it'd be great if you're okay with it.
That's pretty standard.
Sure.
So what, what, I need to know for purposes of a motion, the date that, in which it would begin and end.
So the 26th is the Sunday before the 2nd.
26th to the 2nd?
Yes.
Okay. So to allow Relay for Life to put ribbons on the downtown light poles?
Correct.
From April 26th?
26th through May 2nd, and also for them to solicit cooperation from the businesses.
Okay. Very good. Everyone clear on that motion?
I'll support it.
You'll support it, Mr. Gearbaugh? Okay. Any subsequent discussion? No? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. As have it.
Okay. So just the light, the posts, not the trees. Perfect. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. Appreciate your work on, on Relay for Life. We're looking forward to that. Hoping for nice weather.
Yes.
Are there any additional citizen comments? Let me just make a, a, a couple of statements here to perhaps resolve some confusion that, that exists. I think I speak for everyone on the dais and everyone in the city when I say we take the odor issues at our wastewater treatment plant very seriously, and as our guests from Tetra Tech articulated tonight, we're hopeful that, to a certain extent, the issues are rectified during Phase 2 of the construction work at our plant. However, noting that this council and this city want to, to, to deal with this issue in a very substantive way, we've asked Tetra Tech to, to do an analysis on this, and I believe that you'll be meeting in the not-too-distant future with city staff to talk about steps moving forward that, that the city can take to, to deal with this issue, and we look forward to that. The other thing that I want to note is that the proposed Annalena Farms on the western border of the city of Celine is just that, it is proposed. We are assessing whether it's realistic and feasible to get water and service sewers, sewer, ser, we're assessing whether it's feasible to get water and sewer to that site, excuse me. So I just want to be very clear on that. I'm hopeful that it comes to fruition, but again, the process is very fluid, there are a lot of moving parts, and we're quite a ways off from, from reaching an agreement that would bring that parcel into the city of Celine. So I just want to be very clear about that. Are there any other comments or discussion items from council? No, then I would note that our next meetings are, our next meeting is April the 27th with a work meeting beginning at 7:00. That's a special meeting, excuse me. We then have a regular meeting on May the 4th with a work meeting beginning at 6:00 PM, a regular meeting at 7:30, and currently we're scheduled for a regular meeting at 7:30 on the 18th, but we do have the possibility for a work meeting on that date as well if we have not finalized our 2016 budget. So I just want to make note of that. There are no absences this evening, so we'll dispense with that motion. So at this time, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn at...